All right, we're gonna call to order the Dover School Committee meeting on January 22nd at 7:39. Do we have any community comments? Great, hearing none. First thing I'd like to say is, this is our first meeting of 2019, so Happy New Year, welcome back everybody, hope everyone had a nice, nice break. School was great when everyone came back from their break, everything looked wonderful, kids were excited, and then I do want to say thank you to the custodial team, even though we get a snowstorm on a long weekend on a Sunday, I think the deep freeze and all the ice actually caused more of a problem than getting a foot of snow. So, you know, obviously making sure that our students and our staff and our educators are safe, our custodialist team deserves a nice round of applause and kudos because everything looks wonderful and we're all here, so, thank you.
Some schools closed.
And some schools are closed.
Really?
Yeah. The next order of, on our agenda are the reports, starting with Ms. Dial.
Thank you very much. Well, I echo your thoughts, I was so glad to see all the staff coming in today, seeing all the kids come in today, we even had a few people who went away for a long weekend and had difficulty getting back, but they made it, so that was, that was great to see. Continuing on from the previous meeting, a lot of the news in my report is about social emotional learning, so building off the district strategic plan, building off the special education review, that is an important focus of what we're doing here at Chickering. Another important piece that we're really focusing on is the cultural responsiveness. It's been incredibly exciting this year, having a PLC leader at every grade level and really seeing the headway that we're able to make with that. Having weekly meetings where we can do check-ins and then one meeting a month that's really dedicated to cultural responsiveness has made a big difference and people are really invested in that. The other, the other areas are kind of not at a peak in terms of our professional growth and evaluation system, we are at the midpoint in continuing with that, and I think everything else is actually going to cover it. Do you have any other questions? Or any questions?
I'm just gonna say one thing, because I don't get in the building as much as I used to, it was really nice to come in and see, I know it's on the stairs, the Be Kind poster, and then there's a poster over here, and several different reminders during the day, which I, it seems like a small thing, but it really isn't, I think it really does kind of reset the brain when you see that, even if you don't consciously know you're taking it in, so that was very cool.
Appreciate that, that was a project from our Make a Difference Club, and they have many more things planned, that's, it did make an impact, we put a lot of feedback, so I'm glad that stood out.
I'd love to see that on the stairs.
Pilot piece on the stairs, to see if we put more pieces on the stairs.
I was gonna recommend putting more pieces on the stairs.
There's many, many more coming, but we're just making sure no one can survive.
Making sure no one trips.
No, I think that would be great, it's a great reminder, you know, to the day, so thank you.
And a great book is, it's this, when you're trying to create, reinforce, or change culture, it's the small things, and it's those small, tiny, daily incremental things that matter, and it's the things that, I think if you're a child, I think you also notice as well, so I think, I agree very much with that. Can I just say, I, two things that popped out to me, thank you very much for updating us on how the change with Spanish and foreign language being now full school, every grade subject, but also how that affects as the children move to the middle school, and how, and all the work that's being done to manage that transition for the district, though. Thank you very much for that. And then just my, what I said in the last meeting about open circle, I just, I, you did mention it, I had Dan to comment, I, any, any efforts or thinking that you have in all this spare time that you don't have, to just be extremely rigorous in the, in helping it be used as much as possible, because I can imagine some teachers may use it eight times a week, some teachers may just have, it might just drop off their plate every, at the end of every Friday, because they, they have so much other things that I, I just love to, it's, it's not an inexpensive curriculum, and how, how it's used and how we can learn how better to use it, I think would be brilliant.
I agree, it's, it's an important time to look at that closely again and see where it's being implemented. There's the curriculum itself, and just as important is having that familiar forum, so very often when kids come in and they're troubled by something, or there's, there's some transgression that occurred out at recess, let's say, let's have an open circle, and it's a time for discussion that has certain parameters such as not naming people, you know, you don't say Johnny kicked me at recess, and that's, that started at kindergarten, so that, that format is really valuable, and yet it is only one piece, it's the social competency curriculum, and it, as, as you know, I'm sure it comes out of Wellesley College, and they have added different segments over the years as more and more becomes important and apparent as a need in schools, but it does need to be balanced out by other curriculums such as responsive classroom that we've been considering as a district, the assessment, but to your, to your original point, yes, we will be taking it closely.
But I will say, to that point, I know it's been used for a long time, but there's a reason for that too, it's very, it's a very highly regarded, it's not a dinosaur by any means, I think, it's fair to say.
No, I, my thing, my point was, I think, as with any resource, I, I would, some teachers may use it
Sure.
Very little, some teachers may use it a great deal, that I'm sure there's lessons to be learned from that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
When we have new faculty come on board, we have them trained within the first two years, and it's, that's over the course of a year, and it's, as you said, it's expensive, but it's an important investment.
Yeah. Do we know, just from the language, and I'm thinking about our academic innovation work, are kids, they're gonna continue doing Spanish, it's gonna be a really interesting transition, are they gonna pick new languages, should we be thinking about different languages that possibly they wanna move into?
Yeah, and that's a good question, so at this point, given the resources that we have, they're gonna have the option of either continuing in Spanish or picking up French or Latin.
We don't know yet what
So, no, we don't know what they're gonna pick, I've done, you know, an informal survey on, on the Sherburne side, it seems like there's a mix, you know, we've looked carefully at, oftentimes French teachers can teach Spanish, Spanish teachers can teach French, to what's our capacity, we're pretty comfortable that we're gonna be able to meet their needs, but a great conversation topic for the Innovation Committee is languages and what should we
We can do a case study of my family, because I have four who are all, I have a third grader and a fifth grader who have taken Spanish here the whole time, and then I have a sixth grader, who this is his first year because he missed it, and then I have a ninth grader who started at sixth grade and is now in honor Spanish, so we're like, you can, you can study us.
Well, we wanna do the apple, you've read about the apple dipsticking, we're looking at doing it at all levels, so we'll just do your family, and then we'll validate the needs.
We have them at all levels, but they like help each other, because they sort of all know different things, you know, even my ninth grader, I mean, it's obviously a much more honor Spanish in high school, but, you know, my daughter who's been now in it for five years, she'll be like, Sophie, how do you say, and she knows, even if she can't like conjugate it and do this, the whole thing, but it's very cute.
Whatever language they choose, they'll be a better French speaker from having done Spanish, and a better Latin, Latin student from having done Spanish, that's for certain.
Right, and Lainey Glenn, the curriculum coordinator for the middle school in world languages, is really, you know, going to try to connect the dots with fifth grade parents during the fifth grade meeting this year, to talk about the research behind the advantages of continuing in Spanish versus the advantages of
Right.
Starting a new language, and there's, you know, it's fifty-fifty, but she's gonna put that all out there for parents and students to choose one.
Any other comments or questions for Ms. Dial? Wonderful, Ms. McCoy.
And, so a lot of my conversation topics match Ms. Dial, so I won't belabor anything, just thank you to those of you who already completed the parent survey for the mathematics curriculum, if you haven't yet, please consider doing so. We have launched the Academic Innovation Committee, we had a very exciting meeting on Friday, and I'd like to thank both Brooke and Adrian for serving on that committee, and they're welcome to chime in about their experience, and lastly, just supervision and evaluation, we're gonna have to bring a group together to look at that, because as you know, the QPO pilot is in place this year, and, and what we want to do with that for a long-term solution, as well as looking at the rubric again and considering whether we move to the state rubric, we need to have that conversation, so Andrew and I will, will work with whoever needs to be included, including the Teachers Association, to have that conversation and kind of come up with our proposal.
Just a bit of, and it's not, not academic, but on the emergency response, I, I still hear a number of questions around security, I thought it was pretty well addressed.
You're jumping ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay, thanks for the heads up.
We're gonna do a student consciousness meeting, so if you wanna talk about anything in the meeting, just have at, all right.
Thank you.
So you can proactively address that, sorry.
Are you gonna go?
I'm gonna skip over emergency response.
No, I, I wanna say something about the academic innovation, you go first on that.
I'm just gonna give kudos, are you?
Go on, go, go.
And I think, well, a lot of other people here on the, for, to Beth for getting it started, and how incredibly organized, and we all have a lot of homework, it's all very clearly delineated, it will be a lot of work, but very interesting, she's done a ton of background research and found a ton of resources, and
Interesting.
It's really quite impressive, so thank you for, for getting that started.
It's very inspirational.
It really was, right?
It was fantastic, the fifty-five people
And did you manage everybody appropriately?
She did, there was holders and colors and binders, and it was
It was tremendous.
I put on my teacher hat and I was good to go.
Go ahead.
I, I wanna, I have to share some stuff, it was, it was absolutely tremendous, so Beth broke us into groups, and
Well, predetermined groups.
Predetermined groups, and there was some questions on, around the challenges of students in going into society, and, and what skills do they have that would be a fit for the future needs, so we all talked about that, and we, my group, for example, I had a high school student, I had a parent who was also a school superintendent, I had some teachers, and it was, it was a great exchange, and then Beth had, we had a fantastic thought leader who spoke for some time and then led us break into more discussion groups, and then we have homework, but I, I'm gonna read a couple of notes, just because it was absolutely mind-blowing, just for everyone, because I think it was, it was just tremendous. There was a lot of talk about the students, the change that one has to make to try and train them to deal with an uncertain and changing environment, and that there was only a feeling from the students, and a feeling from parents, and a feeling from the thought leader, that the, these students were coming nationally, this is not a DS thing, students were leaving high school, trained in inflexibility, when they really needed the skills to be adaptable, and, and that was one of the real, the real challenges. There was a statistic that forty-three percent of twenty-five to twenty-nine-year-olds who did a, who have done a four-year degree are underemployed, which means, unemployed means either they're unemployed, or they're doing a job that they didn't need to go to university to do. And how employers are now not, not offering jobs, but offering a place on a summer employment boot camp, to see how they work in teams, how, what their communication skills are like, what, what they're like as a coworker, and a potential coworker, and then they may offer jobs, so gone are the days when you interview and flash your, the college that you went to. Andrew, there was a lot of talk about student voice, and how, how the, the ideal school of the future, the teachers, the coach, and in the, at the high school level, and the student really is using their voice in so many ways, and one of the fascinating suggestions from the thought leader, Tony Wagner, was, was having essay answers, or essay homework, or essays being the core of the skills and the work that a student might, might do in future years. There was, there was, he, there was a quote from the thought leader, said, "I would never send my child to a university," he said, that because they're, they're not focused on grooming students for these soft skills of teamwork, adaptability, communication, and that the liberal arts colleges have, have just been much, much more nimble in providing that experience to the children, which I thought was, you know, fascinating. Talked about the, how the trend is for colleges to give no advanced credit for AP courses, Dartmouth being the most recent one, which would, I think, go against parent conversations at the Legion or the Heritage, and the realization for that, and, yeah, I, that's it, I just, I just, there were so many nuggets that I wrote down, and normally, normally when I go to meetings like this, I write stuff down because it helps me memorize it, and I throw it away, and throw these away, but it was great, and Beth did an absolutely fantastic job, smiles around when people left, smiles around during, smiles at the beginning, it was great, thank you.
And I just wanna say, I apologize for not being able to make that, I had a important family commitment book far before this, this date was set up, involving my oldest daughter, and you just don't cross her, but, but the fact is that we have been in one hundred percent agreement throughout this conversation, that this is really the way we should be moving, we need to start to think outside the box, and really importantly, give permit, give teachers permission to get outside the box, and sometimes that's what you'll hear, it's like, okay, well, you guys care so much about our scores, et cetera, and our rankings, you know, you don't really mean it when you say, you know, explore new and creative ways to, to teach the same material with maybe some different kinds of hands-on experiences, we do mean it, we definitely mean it, and to that end, our plan is to go and speak with the teachers at the four respective schools and share kind of the same thing that we did when we did the, kind of the Future of DS, which I'm sure tied a lot of what you were talking about on Friday together, it definitely speaks a lot to like design thinking, and learning how to work as a group with kids who are not within your friend group, or haven't been in the same level with you as, for the past three or four years, like how do you do that? And so, this is awesome stuff, we are headed in the right direction, and now, I just wrote it down to myself, I am definitely gonna send that report to you, speaking of homework, but it's, it's worth reading, it's worth looking at, because I think what you'll feel is kind of reaffirmation, that what we're doing is in the, we're going in the right direction, and this is awesome, so I'm so psyched that it happened, and the fact that we could have Tony Wagner participate, that's the coup of the century, so tip of the hat to Beth for her perseverance, and I know you are right, she is a taskmaster, covers a many, many different bases, which makes her an excellent accomplish, accomplice to me, because she balances me in a big way, so thanks for doing that, Beth.
My pleasure. Thank you for having your time.
Dr. Keo, we anxiously await your report, especially when it comes to the emergency response.
I'm so sorry, we're out of time. So, well, I mentioned in there that the emergency response team for the folks at home, and the audience, that, and we've had two now, emergency response team meetings that include all of the building leadership, and members of the central office, and importantly, the police departments have been involved in that, I've also been meeting with both Chief Thompson from Sherburne and Chief McGowan from Dover, on occasion to process some of the things that we've been talking about, so that's been very good. We are, the Chickering staff did rehearse their protocols, was it last week, or the week before last week, and, you know, across the three districts, we're still working on this stuff, but it's, it's, it's been a challenge, time-wise, to try and make some of these facility changes at the other schools, Chickering's in good shape in terms of its security, and we have done some things that won't be known to the public over here that I think are really important, so with that, what are you hearing?
I'm just hearing questions, you know, what, what are the schools doing? I, I thought it was pretty adequately covered publicly, but I don't know, perhaps maybe a, a reminder or update that comes out in a newsletter.
That's not a bad idea at all, actually, that's a great answer.
Yes, perhaps.
Yeah, it's a good idea. The, the problem is, some of the stuff that we're doing, we're really not getting into.
It's just the generic, though.
Generic, yes, it is. But sometimes when you make those generic responses, people feel like, well, that was pretty generic.
Well, I will say that the region that approves last week, $145,000 for security enhancements, so that was a public vote, we talked a little bit about what
A little bit of the detail.
Yeah, I mean, the biggest obviously is the intercom access control for the campus, that's the biggest piece of that, and there's, there was multiple projects that we were doing, but that publicly was made, that was publicly made last week, so if there's any feeling that the region's not being addressed there, we, that was a step that we are taking, we just have, can't do it too quickly, right, we have to take our time and make sure we're doing everything.
So that's an important one, so the same way you now buzz into Chickering and to Pinehill, which was not the case at Pinehill at the beginning of the year
Correct.
You could get in at different entrances now, you come in the same way at Pinehill, the same way you do at Chickering, right through the, the main entrance after buzzing, and you'll now do that at the middle and high school, so that's, that's different, and that's, that's a bit of a culture shift, but, you know, we, we heard the, the wisdom of the folks who did the security audit and
So, I assume it's open for a period of time in the morning, when all the kids
It's open for a period of time in the morning, and it's open two weeks.
If you have a bell scheduled.
And then otherwise it
Right, and you'd have to go to the main entrance with them, and it's also, there's lenses on the backside of the middle school as well, for the science entrance and for the middle school entrance, going back to those respective main offices, so people can see who it is during the day.
I do think, Michael brings up a good point, just the, the communication, you know, and people read things and either miss it or don't see it, and just with a lot of things, even with teaching, or with our children, or even with ourselves, you gotta repeat messages for it to stick, just to touch, even if it's highlights you've touched on before, or some of the things that we've done, it's obviously in the news, usually not for good things, so everyone hears it, so it's not a bad thing to just hit it every now and again, just to remind that this is something that's important to everybody in the community, and we're, we're not losing focus with everything else that's going on.
No doubt about it, it's a, it's a good suggestion, and I'm pretty confident, when those changes happen, the parents will hear about it from their kids.
Very quick, I mean, it's, you need to give heads up too, because that's gonna change people, kids lots in the middle of the day, as easily as they
Well, we can use
They got to buzz and wait.
Well, it's not, it's instantaneous, you're buzzing right to the secretary's face, so
Yeah, but it's good to
It's gonna be, it's gonna feel a little different.
And we have to get the, the staff internally ready for this too.
And we have to be in the queue of schools getting this done, so
Right, so we don't, that's what we're working with, now that we have the vote and we have the funds available, we're working with the contractor.
And that's what Don means by, it takes time, because if you don't go and say, let's get this booked, and then it doesn't pass at school committee, so there's a process.
And we are actually using some new technologies, so we're, we're having a demonstration next week, so obviously you don't wanna rush so quickly and then be like, oh my gosh, what did we do, so, although, we're taking, we're being very thoughtful in what we're doing, so that what we get is gonna be really good for that campus.
Thank you.
So, two other very quick things, the Accept Board of Directors and Business Managers meeting, there's been a shift in, in Accept, and that Framingham has pulled away from using transportation, that's shifting that burden onto the remaining towns, that's a big challenge for us, so there's a meeting on Thursday that I'll be at with the other members of the board, and just hoping that we can come up with some other solutions for how to offset that, because that's a potential big hit for our budget. So I wanted to mention that, and then I also wanted to, to say how much I enjoyed coming over to Chickering, was it last week, or the week before, and just, you can read the little story there, it was glorious, they're introducing themselves and looking you in the eye, and the way they're so, all very different, it was just a, it's, as I said in my note, it's just a constant reminder of why we do what we do, it's just, it warms your heart, and knowing you're making a difference, it's just awesome. And that's pretty much it, I wanted to thank, oh, I did thank Laura, who saw that, I really appreciate Laura's newsletters and the thought that she puts into them, and the messages being so consistent with what we're trying to do as a district, that is the same thing as consistent messaging in a little way on the steps, seems like no big deal, but it is a big deal, because when you're hearing it all the time from all the important people in the system, not that everyone's not important, but from the people who are in leadership roles, it's hugely important, so, awesome, thank you for doing that.
So do I get to razz you?
Yeah.
Consistent messaging.
I know what he's gonna say, here it comes.
So, kudos to, to, to you guys for the, the core values, I love it, you started it, and it's not there.
Shouldn't you be using a red pen? You know what, I don't know how that happens, I really don't.
Can we get on the newsletters, is that possible to do, can we, is that a pain? I don't know, it would be nice to see, I thought I was, but then I wasn't.
We have a graduate now.
Right, no, I know, those of us who aren't
I think Andrew's referring to the staff newsletters.
I was referring to staff newsletters.
Oh, no, 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 sorry, okay, no, I don't, we don't need to be on that.
I read one, I was behind in my email, I loved it, I wrote to Laura, I said, this is, this is a great message, and then I read the next one that had already come, and I hadn't gotten back to her on the first one, I said, and I love this one too, and they just, they were really good.
Again, it's the repetition or keep reminding, so, you got it Laura, you're getting it, thank you. Next, unless there's any comments for Andrew, thank you.
Before I cut you off.
Warrant report, just for your review, it's in your packet, thank you for those of you that continue to sign off, Rachel, and anyone who's covering for, only in December, right? If there's no comments on the warrant report, if history repeats itself, I believe, Dr. Reindman, are you up for the MCAS report?
Do you wanna leave with anything, or no?
No, I mean, it's all good news, we need to be proud of our students and our teachers for demonstrating their achievement on the standardized test, this perhaps might be the last MCAS presentation we have in the district, if the Innovation Committee has anything to say about it, but in the meantime, let's look at the data.
You guys gonna influence the state?
We're working on it.
Okay.
Wouldn't that be awesome?
After that introduction, we're looking to get the MCAS results.
Lights.
I guess lights, yeah.
I have some of our old eyes still see.
This is always a highlight, so
Highlight of my year.
I'm sure it is.
That's for last.
Is it the highlight of the students' year as well, do you think?
No, it's unnecessary evil, I think, is what happened.
Thank you.
Best part, perfect, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Good evening. One of the exciting things that's happened this year, and you may or may not be aware, is that Pinehill has a new assistant principal in Allison Gilling's route, who is new to administration, so I've been asked to mentor her, which has been fascinating, because she's So I've been asked to mentor her, which has been fascinating because she's totally new to administration, has an unbelievable skill set in Google Sheets and graphs and charts. So this has all been redone. This is her gift to me was, this is an all-new report, so you can't really fall asleep. Graphics are much better, but it's been a lot of fun to learn that from her. So it's slightly different. The first, most important thing is, it's all good news. And I've been told to be short and sweet, so I'll do what I do best. Grade four and five were computer-based tests last year, as you know. Grade three was a paper-based test. Everyone's coming over this year, like it or not.
That's great.
So we've started working with third graders more extensively using Chromebooks. And we're working on shifting devices around. We're not a one-to-one district, which is fine. So we're working through sharing devices and we've done the same thing upstairs. We have classrooms that pair up. Each one has 10 and they trade the devices back and forth. So there's all these carts and computers moving all over the building. So we're getting ready to do some infrastructure testing in terms of Wi-Fi and devices. I'm sure we'll be fine. An interesting point, as you look at the data in terms of percentages, when I started doing this a thousand years ago, we had about 100 kids per grade. So one percentage point was about one student. Our ends, in terms of grades, have dropped to 87, 78 students per grade. So that, you know, one student can change a bar quite significantly. So if we look at our third grade scores, what Allison and I said to do was look at the last two years. So if you look at, the bottom is 17. It's represented the red in the graph at the top. Likewise, the blue is 18. Our students did exceptionally well in the grade three ELA test. Our fourth grade also continued to show great strength in ELA. We are, continue to be better at selected responses, which is what we used to call multiple choice. And continue to work on our open response writing. One of the interesting pieces is that when the kids work online, at the end of the testing period, some of those questions are released to us. So we can go back to the kids the next year and say, here was the reading you did, here was the question you had, and here's what you said. And they almost all say, I wrote more than that. What would you write now? Right, what have you learned from that? And our pattern continues in fifth grade ELA, building on the work from pre-K and K. Each year getting stronger and stronger. By the end of fifth grade, our students do quite well.
That's really excellent.
Is it a new graph we learned from me?
Beautiful.
Isn't it stunning? I'm not sure I can recreate it, but I did do that. An interesting piece, looking at just a slice of how our kiddos did. Third grade, ooh, I slipped there. Third grade math. Again, we are fond of the strengths of everyday math as a program and we supplement it as we see fifth. It's not perfect. We haven't found a program that is. The nice piece is we're doing the same program as Pine Hill. And our teachers were able to do some collaborative work in terms of some of the things, mostly what we add on and change with everyday math.
Deb, I'm sure this is obvious, but how come these numbers aren't adding up to 100% and they're?
Averaging. They average out to, it's averaged to the ones place. So there's decimals that get carried through that don't get added.
But if I look at meeting.
They're adding the two, the, the left one is adding the next two.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, meeting or exceeding expectations. That's a very good question, because I would be in a lot of trouble.
Well, I'm just like, and you know, it's my, I just said, I thought it was exceeding, I didn't mean all things.
Right, there you go.
Thank you.
Right, so this is the number that, oh, that was fun. We talk, we'll go to fourth grade anyway. We talk about sort of getting over the fence in the old form of the advanced proficient needs improvement warning. So we've always totaled the top two categories. Used to be advanced and proficient. It's now exceeding and meeting expectations in terms of those students who are well on their way. When they process the data for the MCAS, for the Department of Ed, they take in all of the students and the scores, the raw scores at math across the state, rework the numbers and come up with a range, basically, and then decide on where 50% is and then scale the scores. The interesting thing is that it's not a direct correlation. If you have a 47 raw score, doesn't automatically convert to, say, a 380. There's actually a range now. It might be a 42 to a 48 converts to a 380. 500 is the cut point for exceeding expectations or me, or not. So there's a, the whole statistics 201.
Yes.
We go to grade three again.
Sure.
What am I losing, please?
Yes.
Am I, isn't that the 84?
Check my math.
What am I?
Are you on grade three?
Am I really losing my mind? Yeah, the 62 and the 22.
So the 78%.
Should be an 84.
Yeah, that says 84. Yeah, no, but I will fix that thing.
No, that's okay.
Yeah?
I just wanna make sure I wasn't losing my mind.
Nope. No, I lost one of my lines then obviously.
Okay, because I'm following along. I love this chart you did as well.
Yes, yes, that's true, that one.
The state comparison is really quite impressive.
Yeah, that's coming up and just looking at it. Absolutely. So we pop through these now.
So just back to grade five?
Yep, sorry.
So that's extraordinarily impressive when you go back to the previous, the, the grade four math and you look at the 2017 cohort. So I was looking at that to see how they did in 2018. And, and just, and then you flip it to grade five math, that's extremely impressive.
Of course.
The cohort study, right.
That's my favorite thing.
Not here, I wonder already. The interesting piece of that too, remember it's a different test.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But it is important. You can track cohorts through, we've done that in the past.
Yeah, and it's, and it, different tests, it's developed. This isn't a precise sort of granular exercise, but you can feel good about certain movements, I think.
Thank you. Strong students here. All my strong students here, you're all doing quite well.
See through those, those numbers in there to see if you're awake.
I'll wait, you'll be part of this one. Give me a second. I don't have a cat carrier problem for you.
I love that one.
Yeah, that was.
So the science scores have done well. I'm sure it has a great deal to do with some of the new kits and the new teaching. I think there was a different commitment to when this test rolled around in the fifth grade.
If I remember, wasn't the, didn't you see an increase in science last year too?
Here?
No, no.
No, we had some concerns.
So you've made some changes and, and feel like it's impacted.
Deborah, can you remind me of the new teaching measure with the FOS?
FOS, yes.
FOS, thank you. Did they come in the beginning of this academic year or were they in to benefit this?
Last year, last year.
Last year, okay.
Last year they came in.
Thank you.
One last year, some grades ended second this year. We are at the point where we feel like we've bought the kits that we need that we're going to use. The nice thing is we've got a couple of really deep, meaty subjects in each grade and going deep in those.
That's great.
Thank you. There we go, this is a little bit different. So looking at the ELA work, so selective responses, multiple choice, essay or the essays. So that top bar for grade three, we'll take that one apart. Our selective response performance, right, as compared to the states. So blue to red, so the colors, there's only a few colors to pick from. And then essays for us and the state. And it shows you what you know already, is that we outperform the state in these two categories, which I think is an important thing to take a peek at. But it also reminds us that there's still places for us to grow.
Yeah.
And in places where we as a collective dropped or rose, the state generally drops or rises. Tended to reflect, so you'll say that the third grade essay was a particularly hard set. You see that across our work and the state's work or results.
But you still expect that yellow and green to be slightly even far apart.
Right, we'd love to see that yellow bar.
Yeah, okay.
John, but I think it's over.
There you go.
That was fun. And this is looking at our reading versus our writing. Same kind of layout in terms of chickering compared to the state. Do whatever you did a second ago when I did this. Okay, so how do we compare to districts? This is the piece that Beth has included, which we just put in this PowerPoint so you can take a peek at it. Oops, okay, grade three, four and five for ELA. Schools selected below are similar to our districts. Those are ones that we picked years ago. Any math? Again, you've got these. I'm sure you've already taken a peek at the data here.
Deb, are those percentages or?
They are percentages, yes. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, we've all, we've decided to always work with those numbers. Thank you. And our science scores. And again, this is the legacy test of the advanced and proficient. I have not heard any updates on that changing. I don't know if you have. I think they've gone quiet for a while. They're getting excited about history right now. Okay, so what do, what do we do with what we've learned? So obviously we're working with our grade three teachers to get ready to do computer-based testing. And another piece as we move forward this year and into next year is looking at our tier-two interventions, which slides up to our IB block. So we've done a lot of work in the past few years of getting an IB block in place and instruction around that and expectations around that. But what we want to do is, how are we using it to best meet our tier-two and tier-three needs? So if you think in terms of response to intervention, I'm sure you've sat through this before. Grade, tier three is our special ed supports. Tier two are our supports within the classroom or maybe with a reading specialist. And tier one supports, which happen all in the classroom, the differentiated instruction. So we wanna look at how are we using IB and can we be more efficient across a grade or across a series of classrooms to meet that need? Also looking at, we have our SST, which is our student support team. Again, another process that we've put in place and this feels rigorous, but we wanna look at a data analysis team. So we have a group of teachers who are very interested in looking at the data that we collect around the school and how do we use that? So they went to a workshop this summer and they've been continuing working after school to look at what sort of data do we have and how do we use it? And then could we use that data to better feed which students get tier-two and tier-three interventions? So it's taking several different pockets that we've got going on and bringing them together and stringlining them. So that will be our work this year and into next year.
Does that, be, expand upon the IB block, as you said, to across the grade to better meet the needs, tier-two, tier-three? Does, is that gonna result in some, some grouping? Some, is that, is that where you think it might get to?
I would expect that it would. So for example, if I took the whole fourth grade team, is there a time that we could look at our intervention across math? And how do we meet the needs? And maybe there's a few in each class and we're reorganizing.
So I've always thought it very, it must be very challenging for a teacher, some IB block is there. I've got 18 or 21 individual needs to try and, and you can sort of panic group. Sort of, I'm sure it's much more professional than that. But, but I've always thought it's very difficult to try and do. And I, I would have thought that there would be, this is great to see.
Right, and there's some great models out there and other school districts that are using this. So we're gonna tap into that. Our math specialists, this year we decided to use our Title I funds to hire a math specialist who's been working within the building, which has been very interesting. So we're gonna, at the end of the year, look at that and decide was that the most effective use of those funds? So it might continue to be grant funded, we might go back to our other MCAS tutors, we'll see how that goes. And then cross-class and district observations, partnering up with Pine Hill. Get some work going on there.
Thank you.
Sure.
Brilliant, thank you very much.
Just thinking about technology with Stephen and everything that he's had to do, how have we done in terms of managing any, any issues during the testing or?
In terms of Steve Hart or?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Has he had to do anything creative to keep things up or has things go smoothly or?
Steve is phenomenal in the IT department, he's phenomenal. So Steve helps us with the day-to-day, where are the Chromebooks and how are they signed out? Are they charged? Do we have cables? The IT department does a lot of the work of the day of the testing and the Wi-Fi.
Any identified need or anything like that that's?
Anything we've brought up, they've taken care of.
Okay.
Yeah, so we've done, yeah, we had the support we need in terms of technology and.
On testing days, IT usually deploy somebody in the building to, right?
Yes, we have. And we test on the same days, so they, it's a nice use of resources.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're trying to save money on our heat here.
Apparently, I'm crazy.
Mine goes off at eight o'clock. It's, it's actually more comfortable though than the time we were here and there was no air conditioning. Remember, it's like 90 degrees.
The lights. I just would hit the wrong, the wrong switch, Laura.
Can I do a commercial? Wait while we wait for the lights. And just to say, thank you to Dr. Reindman for putting that together and collaborating with Allison across the river. And obviously, content knowledge is important and that's one of the skills that we've continued to focus on moving forward. But as we start to challenge how we define success in Dover Sherburne, that was my original point. And we might shift our focus a little bit on these presentations. And therefore I invite you all tomorrow night to Beyond Measure, the screening at the high school at 6:30, where they talk about the soft skills and how do you measure things that are tough to measure? So if you're looking to challenge your thinking and challenge traditional thinking, I encourage you to come tomorrow at 6:30. Thank you.
It was like a real commercial break.
Not, not to have information overload, but perhaps in the vein of kind of over-communicating. I mean, you guys are doing wonderful stuff. It's really exciting. I don't know if it's, and I know you've put out some things, but I would think, you know, the more, the better. If there were little clips, little video clips that can go out from time to time to the community, to parents, teachers, as to what's going on. I think it's really exciting, so to get that, get that momentum going would be great.
Thank you. We're also taping things along the way. So Tony Wagner, for example, presented on Friday and we videotaped that. And as soon as it's ready to go, we're gonna put it out for everybody to watch. So if you weren't part of the committee meeting, you can watch it from home. So we'll continue to do that.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you very much. Don.
Well, my report's early break because it actually has been a pretty steady school operation since we last met in December. So salaries are still where we thought, about a positive 190. Again, that was, that's the unfilled position predominantly in the Strategic Learning Center. And then we had some unknown retirements after post-budget. And we're still having some unfilled positions, which whenever those are unfilled, obviously there are salaries that are saved by that. And as Laura mentioned, her report, she's still filling EA positions. So there has been a lot of activity in that arena. And out of district, there's been no changes since our last report to you. So one thing that has is that now the financials are caught up with the projections. Because now all the purchase orders for the out-of-district placements are in your system. So my report now ties exactly to your number report. Any questions on the monthly financial?
A couple.
Yep.
The, in your cover memo, assuming full utilization of the substitute budget in our projections.
Right.
I, I didn't understand.
Which means I'm assuming that when I'm looking at salary variances, I'm assuming we're gonna spend all of, yeah. We're gonna spend all of substitutes.
For, for 2020.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
For fiscal year 2018.
No, oh, that we'd spend all, but we're saving along the way.
So if you look, a lot of times people take the total salary variance there and they try to back into the variance. And I'm just giving you a heads up that we, we assume we're gonna spend.
For purposes of the variance.
Exactly.
Got it, okay, thank you. That makes sense. And then the, I, I noticed that the, the PD seems to be kind of consistently, substantially.
So that is course reimbursement. So we, as, as teachers submit, we can only pay them $400 initially until we get to June. And then remember, we can pay up, up to 1,500. And whatever's left then gets converted into the professional development workshop days.
So that'll be caught up.
So it'll all get spent, it just doesn't get spent till basically June.
Got it, thank you.
Don, I did two small questions. First one is, can you remind me heating oil contracts or any, the oil price?
So oil, we, we locked in at 228. Which was quite a bit more than our $64 the year before. But we do that in May, so we did that last May. And so we always budget based on what Dover tells us, which is closer to like three, I forget what it is exactly. So we always have some savings, we're just not going to have the huge amount of savings we've had in the past because the oil price didn't sort of catch up with Dover's recommendation for compensation, yeah.
And any, I need, any insight yet into air conditioning, LED light trade-off?
So I didn't put the numbers in the report because I wanted to touch base with Gino at the town of Dover, but the raw data that I looked at, I looked at a couple of different things. Unfortunately, because we were doing multiple things at one time, so in one summer we converted all LED and then we added air conditioning. So I looked at a couple of different things. So if we looked at air conditioning, really predominantly taking the timeframe from July to October of fiscal year seventeen, when we had no air conditioning at all, to July to October of this year and looked at what that increase is, obviously, there might be some other things going on. That increase in usage was fifteen percent. So obviously, the air conditioning is using.
Right.
More electricity. Then I took the period of November to March, assuming we wouldn't be using the air conditioning at all, and compared fiscal year seventeen, November to March, to fiscal year nineteen. Yep, November to March.
So that, that would say you're on the LED chain?
Yes, and that, we saw a five-point-two percent savings, so basically five percent savings. They were projecting obviously a larger savings from the conversion, so that's where I wanted, wanted to talk to Gino because I'm curious what the town of Dover was able to capture. The problem with looking at our utility bills, I chose a, a big enough period of time hopefully, but every month has different dates and the date can make a difference in all this. So it wasn't getting exact. But then the other thing I did was look at fiscal year seventeen actual to fiscal year nineteen projected. So I know what nineteen is through the air conditioning season and I'm assuming that what we did in fiscal year eighteen is basically electricity that we used, right? That showed a two-and-a-half percent increase. So we were able to absorb, and which I thought we'd probably be able to do, the air conditioning is sort of offset by the LEDs, so we should really see minimal increase in usage here.
You're looking at kilowatt-hours versus rate?
Yeah, only looking at kilowatt-hours strictly, yep.
So that, that would be?
Obviously, the rates change, but yeah.
Obviously, refine it with your conversations with Gina, but that would be a, a great thing, I think, to share with both warrant and capital.
Right.
And maybe selectmen, because it was something that, it was an unknown question during the time and we expressed a hope, but that's.
They were looking more at like twenty percent savings, so that's why I wanted to see if he's looking at it differently or if he saw that, because we, we have even went beyond and replaced some canister lighting that wasn't even in the audit. But that's, that sort of gives you a ballpark of the period of time. Now, once we get through all of fiscal year nineteen, then we're going to have another set of data points that we can look at, but sort of have to piece it together with seventeen and nineteen because eighteen was our anomaly.
Cool.
Okay, any other questions, comments? The proposed FY twenty operating budget, please.
Okay, so moving on from our, part one of our meeting, I presented to you tonight sort of where we stand and if you recall, what we do once I present your big pages is we start tracking it on the smaller page initially. So the top just sort of frames where we are, fiscal year nineteen budget versus the twenty proposed. And then the middle part are the budget adjustments that we're bringing forward for the committee's review this evening. So the first one is the sped admin reorganization. You have an attachment on page two of this that, you've, you've seen this document before in some of the joint meetings, but the new thing that's been added is our work on the admin assist. So now you're seeing the complete departmental reorganization. So you have all the positions up in the top that we're looking to have in fiscal year twenty versus where we are in fiscal year nineteen. The numbers, just so you know, you can't take the current and necessarily subtract it from the proposed and see the number I have because I'd already built the fiscal year twenty budget with increases and such. So the number I'm presenting to you of, of savings of twenty-seven thousand five hundred ninety-eight is based on the proposed versus what I had in the budget for fiscal year twenty. And that's coming from the fact that now Dover is sharing sort of the sped administration with Pine Hill, so it's a fifty-fifty share. And we've taken two-point-six admin positions and as Debbie presented earlier, we're only going to have two full-time admin assists to support the sped department. So versus having an individual each of the buildings, we're streamlining everything. We'll have two admin assists supporting the department at central office. So that's where some of the savings came from for the, the two elementaries.
But we're still, Dover and Sherburne are still sharing in the cost.
Yes, oh yes, yeah, and you can see the splits of how the different positions are being shared. The admin assist, that's going to be sort of the finance, the transportation and the support, is going to go our traditional third, third, third. The one who's doing the IEPs is going to be split quarter, quarter and a half. Basically, a quarter for each building. And then the total just shows you, so we're looking at a proposed for fiscal year twenty of seven fifty-five. We're currently carrying our fiscal year nineteen budgets, seven-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand. So there is, even, even though we've built another year of salary increases, there, there still is a little bit of cost savings from this, although that certainly was not what we were attempting to do at all. We're really just trying to be, have a more efficient operation.
The, the two programs that were presented tonight, this, is that to come?
We'll continue on, well, so the one was being housed at Pine Hill, so you won't see any impact from the autistic program. That's.
Now, why?
All the costs are being carried at Pine Hill because currently, most students are projecting to be in that program are Pine Hill students. If you, if Chikering sends a student to that program, you would pay tuition and they would, that would offset the cost that way. So we build the program where the actual staff are going to be and we would tuition in or tuition, tuition in either way, students because of how the districts are set up.
Why, why is that preferable to having a shared program financially regardless of where it's housed? And then having, you know, perhaps an allocation based on utilization?
It's sort of cleaner to, to have it housed in one school and they let them carry the costs and then tuition in versus splitting because if, what if you had no students, what if Dover had no students in the program?
I mean, I.
Yeah.
I, I would think that if it's a, a, I mean, if we're truly making a, a commitment, a kind of a shared commitment to we believe that this is, is what ought to be done across districts, then there ought to be a, I would think, a, a base allocation for getting that up and running. This is, you know, Dover's commitment to the, the autism program and then perhaps there's a, a, some kind of allocation or splitting based on utilization, but, but some base charge across.
I think that would be a larger issue to discuss with both the finance groups of the towns. They're very comfortable with us doing the tuition in when the program is sort of one place and not the other. I don't think they really want to be carrying cost for students that aren't really being supported in that particular year.
And so that, that worries me a little bit, Michael, it, it really does because I'm, I'm, I'm concerned exactly that case coming up where there is no student being sent and yet Dover's still carrying the cost. Or vice versa, if we're, well, I'm, I'm just saying.
We certainly do that with Minuteman.
But I'm, I'm saying based on some of the discussions that have been held in the past over who, who pays more and I, I, I think we're trying, we're trying to stay away from that because we've used this model and it's worked, we haven't had any difficulty with it, it's easy enough. They're, they're certainly accepted over there in the program and then that you just pay the tuition. And vice versa, on the other side of it, you'll note there's a placeholder for SEL support. And that's because we are, we are in fact thinking that we will need some additional support to get this SEL program going off the ground here. So it's not like Dover's not anticipating a cost for their kind of half of these two programs.
I, I hear you, it just doesn't, it, it doesn't feel, it doesn't, I mean, to me, it doesn't feel right. I just, it doesn't feel like it's a shared, you know, truly a shared, it's, it's kind of like a, we have a, a, a close cousin that we happen, if we were to be paying, I know that we've paid out tuition to, to some high schools when we're sending to other high schools, but this seems like it's, it's more of a sibling rather than a close cousin.
I, I totally understand and I think it really, I don't even like to mention the word, but it has to do with the fact that we're not regionalized. We are literally two different districts, so.
But outside of that, there actually is a true need for this program at Pine Hill, so that's why it's, they need it next year. At this point, we're not projecting any students from Chikering needing the program to attend. So that's a reason why when we look at these programs, where are we going to house it? Well, we need the program for start next year at Pine Hill.
And I think of it as kind of having the best of both worlds because we aren't thinking regionally, we're thinking collaboratively so that we're sharing our resources, but we're not a regional system and that's a whole nother conversation that, you know, I'm not sure that the two communities are ready for. But this is a good way of demonstrating that we can get along and I think it will work really well. And I think, I think you have the right administration in place right now and the right school committees in place right now to build that collaboration and maybe one day it will lead to something bigger, but.
I mean, it sounds to me like, I think, Michael, you bring up a, a fair point. You know, it's a way to sort of look at it holistically, test the waters and take pauses and review every budget season and understand where we are. You know, we have historically, not even looking at it this way, there's been some Dover students that have gone over to Pine Hill before and we've paid tuition. So that consistency is there, but now we're looking at the program holistically and trying to get consistency in terms of just understanding each individual student from pre-K, in some cases, all the way through twelfth grade. I mean, I think we just got to keep talking about it and keep thinking about these things. Yeah, everyone has their opinion, but it seems to me like we're kind of trying, we're, we're still flirting, but, you know, we're still not there yet.
I, I'd, I guess, request to keep that on the radar for, for conversation. And how, how will tuition be determined? Will it just be a kind of a prorata of the overall cost?
So what, how we do it now, it will depend on sort of the, how it's going to, the placement will work. We've been using the per pupil expense and then adding on additional services. So the base is the, the DESI per pu- per pupil expense for a student at whatever school, right? And then we add on additional services that go beyond a baseline education.
There's a one-on-one, or?
Yeah. So that is, that's how that is. And, and so because you've already been for many years sending students to Pine Hill, they have a non-resident tuition fund and that's where that money goes into that non-resident tuition fund to be used at the discretion of the, the school committee themselves. Sometimes it directly offsets services and then some, we've just been actually keeping it in that, the fund for teaching.
And when that was set up, do you remember when that was set up?
Yeah, that was set up in two thousand and, so the, to the pre, the pre-K, they didn't do it, they just put it to the pre-K revolving, but the students that we have are attending, attending K through five was set up in fiscal year, Bill's first year, fiscal year seventeen.
So was that something that went through?
It's just, it's just the school committee approval. So we would just create that, it's a revolving fund that, it's, you know, so, in your oversight that sits at the town. So if we ever, if we have someone from Pine Hill who comes here, you guys will have to just establish that fund.
In terms of the placeholder for the SEL support, how long is that a placeholder until it needs to become a decision?
Uh, probably, we'll definitely have a decision when you meet in March.
Okay.
Your budget open hearing. So it's still, as you can see, we've been spending a lot of time meeting about this and we're trying to be recognized that we don't want to take on too much knowing that we've got a lot of new people probably coming on board. So we're really just kind of way to make sure if we're going to do anything, we want to do it right and what exactly would this look like and what do we need? So we're still investigating that a little bit.
And, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, just to, to jump one back, back up on the, the large reduction, because we said we were pending any special ed adjustments in fiscal year twenty proposed budget with now the new programming that we're talking about and having the review consultants, we are now officially removing SLC position that is sitting in your nineteen budget, rolled into your twenty budget. So that is actually coming off for now because that is just determined that it's just a, a, a position that we don't currently have cohort for that we need to, to fund. So the placeholder for the additional SEL support, we're putting a placeholder of fifty thousand. We are thinking it could be, it's like a part-time adjustment counselor. That would be the central person for that, but that's where we're still trying to talk about it. So rather than being washi-washi, we're telling you we have a placeholder and we'll keep you updated as those discussions continue. As Debbie noted, we are increasing the BCBA across the region, across all three districts. The impact to Dover, because you already carried a, a point-six BCBA, is a point-one. So you're just picking up an additional point-one of a BCBA. We have, Debbie, obviously, we, Debbie and the reviewers are really taking time to look at our caseload and how we're staffing. I don't think in the past we've necessarily looked at that that closely. So based on that and the staff support that Chikering currently has for OT, we're not reducing services, but we just don't, we have more capacity than we need right now. So we are looking to reduce the in-building support by point-two.
And has that been somebody, that's not somebody who's permanently placed here?
It's a shared resource and there's other places where we need more.
Consulting services.
It's a, we have a, a combination of one and a piece of FTE and some outside services. So we're looking to reduce the building base.
But this is not, just to clarify because the question came up, this is not reducing OT because of something that was in the report. It's, it's because the services haven't, the, the request for services or the required services that would be in the IEP.
Right.
Don't warrant as much.
Exactly.
It's just the way it worked out.
So it's no change in services provided, it's looking at what needs to be provided versus what we.
So it's just based on supply and demand?
Yeah, capacity, yeah, yep.
And if that changes?
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yeah.
So that is, so just based on the questions that were asked tonight, that's, so what you're saying is maybe like somebody who was high OT left and went to the middle school or something like that?
Yeah.
I'm not saying that, but, but that's.
As an example.
There's a normal kind of ebbs and flows.
Okay.
Of who shows up.
Okay.
But we have the flexibility, if there's a demand changes, we can.
Exactly, and we, and we do that, we're, we're obligated to.
Provide if necessary.
Provide the services for any IP, so that's why you'll see that we will go outside at times and get outside services for speech or whatever based on our, our caseload.
That is a really, really important point in case it comes up. We don't randomly decide who's going to get OT services, those are team decisions. But I don't sit on those teams. Dawn doesn't sit on those teams, Beth doesn't sit on those teams. That, those are team decisions by law and if the team determines that the kid needs the services, then we get to provide it. So that's really important because we don't want people to think we're just cutting away randomly. It doesn't work that way.
Okay.
We'd be in a lot of trouble.
Right, exactly.
That's helpful.
So and we're, we're, as I said, we're bound to provide whatever services are on the IP and we do do that.
Okay.
So the last changes, then we've looked at our, we hadn't looked at this before because we were waiting for all the, the programming changes and for Debbie just to get a little more to speed on our student population here. on our student population here. But we do have a net change in our EA staffing based on the needs, and there's a savings of about sixty-six thousand. Predominantly, it's because we are having fewer one-to-ones because of some of the changes we're trying to make, less restrictive for students, what's best, right? Small groups and not one-to-ones. And we are adding a regular ed EA. So we, Laura and her staff shifted one last year from the EA, so now we're actually adding another one. So you'll have twelve EA, so there could be, potentially be two grades that could have two or one grade that could have three. They're really deploying those resources based on eighth grade and the cohort that's there. But that gives more support, I think, to the classroom teachers and the regular ed students.
Is, do we have any view on how that might look, especially at the kindergarten, first grade, for next year in terms of EAs and what the optics might be in terms of number numbers?
The budget includes one in every kindergarten.
Which is, just to remind my small, that's where we are now, yes?
Yes, yeah, yeah. You went it up. There was a short period of time where you didn't know that, but then we went back, and that's been nineteen, and that'll be twenty.
Thank you.
And then I think the, how the remaining will be deployed will be up to how that needs. But that was an opportunity, I think, to put back. Because I think over time, what we did is we took away some of the regular ed when we needed all the special ed. And so if we're reducing our special ed, let's add back to where it came from. So that was the purpose of that. So all in all, with those changes, Dover's looking really good because we're looking for a reduction in the budget as presented in the in-district of a hundred-and-fifty-seven-thousand-dollar savings.
Now, based on what you mentioned with Except and Transportation, could there be a curveball?
No, because you, IR had already put into your budget what Except had rolled out. We had found some mistakes. Yeah, we had found some mistakes in their number, so I'm actually coming back and taking twenty-five thousand dollars away from what I initially put in, so you're not having as large of an increase as you thought. My hope is that with the board meeting this week, there's gonna be a further reduction because the thought process from the initial meeting that we had in December was to apply some of the Except's reserve to help some of the districts that are really sought increase. And Sherburne is one of those, and I'm hoping it does because they, they did, they had a significant increase on alien cost, but also riders, which is a double win. And so that's, I think they're looking at at least using some of their reserve to offset the large increase that everyone has been seeing this year.
That's been discussed, but it's not...
Right, it's not, but I...
It's not etched in stone.
But this here is a worst-case scenario?
So you're done, yeah. So if nothing happens, you're, you won't see any changes.
Require those services that we weren't anticipating.
Right.
Is there any action required on this, ten-six-one-six-three-five?
Um, no, I'm just, so we do, Adrian and, not Adrian, Andrew and Henry and I do have our sit-down with Warrant on February fifth, and they, these would be the numbers that we would be presenting to them, just so the committee knows. Your final approval of your budget will be your March meeting after you have your public hearing.
Which is, which meeting is the public hearing?
March, I forget the exact date.
Gotcha.
It's a Thursday.
Do you want to, I would always use, do a deal for you?
That's right.
Will you write it for me again this year, and I'll present it?
So the point to, did you say that will be redistributed to another building?
Most likely, yep.
And then my other question was about preschool.
Yes.
When that decision is made.
So that decision has been made. Why it doesn't impact the budget is because all the classes or the pieces that are being reduced are not in our general fund. They're in the pre-K revolving funds.
Oh, okay.
So we carry one class in the general fund, and one class is in pre-K revolving.
Okay.
So that is just outside money that is gonna go away with that position because we're, we carry the one class we're keeping already in here. So there was no budgetary impact for the town for reducing, because it's all paid by outside classes.
And there's no action required in the two-person system?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Anything else for Dawn?
Good job, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, otherwise, just you can, after this, pass them on to Henry, he can...
Will do. Next item on the agenda is actually requires an action. It's the consent agenda with our minutes from our meeting on November twentieth. And then the town report, which...
Thank you for doing it.
I think you guys took a look at, and if there's any comments or, I didn't get anything significant. I got a couple, which I updated, but thank you for, those of you that did respond. So do I have a motion to accept the town report and the minutes from the November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, school committee meeting? Just a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Communications for your information, regional school committee meeting, minutes from the sixth and the fourth. And then our next meeting, I think we have it right here. Yep, March fourth, and it's gonna be to approve, then we'll have action to approve the budget.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions, anything you wanna bring up? Thank you, guys. Meeting adjourned.
Thank you.